All right, good afternoon. If I can draw your attention, please. I'd like to call to order the Weatherford College Board of Trustees meeting for December 8th, 2016. And along with a call to order, I'd like to have the invocation. And Brent, would you please provide that for us today, please?
Yes, sir. Val with me? Yeah, we thank you for this season. We thank you for everything it stands for and represents. We thank you for our students, our faculty and staff, and the break that we are about to have. And we thank you for a brand-new semester about to start and all promise that brings. Thank you for our board and their service. We thank you and allow them to deliberate within your will. And please protect our students over this Christmas break, keep them safe, and back to us in January. So in your name of prayer, amen.
Good morning. Item number two is open form for individuals not on the agenda, and we have none today, so we'll move right on to item number three, the President's Report. Dr. Eaton?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I have a few short recognitions and notices that I would like to give you. First, I would like to recognize Andrew Cantrell for successfully defending her dissertation yesterday in love. Andrew has officially completed all of the doctoral degree requirements to graduate and will be walking in the May graduation ceremony at Texas Tech State University. At Texas Tech University, I would like to congratulate Dr. Cantrell on her job well done.
I'd like to thank everyone for all their support and all my friends that have stood behind me and been patient with me throughout this study.
And you were going to give us a summary of her dissertation defense?
I'll try to. It only takes a year to listen to me.
I think Dr. Eaton has got one other thing to hand out today.
Got to get Andrew's new employee.
Oh. Thank you.
Out with the old and in with the new. Here we go, and here's the name tag.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I want you all to know that Dr. Eaton was probably the reason I started into this program. He sat down one afternoon about four years ago and was talking to me, and he said, "Andrew, you know, I know you've got all the experience that you need here, but you don't have that doctorate." And it made my mind up to go home that night, and I sit down and I talk with my husband. I said, "John, what would you think if I went back to school?" I went back and talked to him the next day, and I said, "Are you serious about what you were talking about?" And he said, "Yes, I was." And I said, "I'm going for it."
And it seemed like it was just yesterday. I mean, she finished.
It was about three years and three months. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ken.
I would also like to recognize Dr. Tola Plusnick, our Assistant Director of A D N Nursing, for receiving the Building Simulation and Skills Capacity Grant, which is part of the grant in the Nursing Innovations Grant Program. The award was $173,654 and will be used to develop curriculum, train faculty, and to purchase needed equipment for our nursing simulation labs that will allow the increased capacity in these labs. I would like to congratulate Dr. Plusnick on a job well done. I would also like to recognize Dr. Allison Stamatys and Dr. Lisa Webster -- or Welch, I'm sorry -- for the outstanding job that they did with the first STEM Mania event on our Weatherford campus. Weatherford College Wise County started STEM Mania in Wise County a few years ago, and it has always been a wonderful success. With their guidance and expertise, Dr. Stamatys and Dr. Welch were able to successfully replicate the event on our main campus in Weatherford. More than 650 Weatherford ISD fourth graders attended this event. This event is geared to stir student interest in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. More than 50 hands-on activities were provided for students to explore. I received calls from Weatherford ISD administrators to tell me that this was the best event their students had ever gone to and that they would come back every year if we would let them do so. I would just like to congratulate each of you and everyone that was associated and participated with these events for making this a wonderful experience for all of the fourth graders in this county to attend. I would like to recognize Brent Baker and his staff and all of the volunteers that made the 16th Annual Weatherford College Golf Tournament such a success. The tournament generated over $19,000 in net profits. These dollars will be used to fund student scholarships at Weatherford College. Congratulations to everyone that made this event what it was. I would also like to thank everyone on our Wise County campus for the outstanding job they did with the Wise County College Night. More than 150 prospective students attended with their parents. This was a great opportunity for these students to see what Weatherford College Wise County has to offer. Moreover, students were given the opportunity to visit with representatives from 40 different colleges and universities. I would like to thank everyone that was involved in making this event a success. I would like to recognize Chief Paul Stone and J.C. Colton and all of the numerous volunteers that once again made Safe Halloween at both Weatherford and Mineral Wells a wonderful event. More than 7,500 people attended at the Weatherford campus and over 500 attended at the Mineral Wells campus. Families that attended the Safe Halloween event were asked to bring a canned food item. All of the collected items were donated to the Parker County Senior Center, and we said that over 2,000 cans were donated. Chief Stone told me that before we came in here, so that was impressive. I would just like to say thank you to everyone that participated in the event. This is the perfect example of community outreach and partnership. I would also like to recognize Ralph Willingham and everyone that assisted in making our Veterans Day celebration a special event. More than 200 people attended this year's event, and everyone I spoke to commented on what a wonderful event it was. I'd like to say congratulations to Ralph and everyone that worked so diligently to make this event a success. Now I'd like to get our enrollment update. Spring 2017 headcount is approximately 1% over the headcount this time last year. However, due to the large number of dual-credit enrollments, presently 26% of our total enrollments to this point, our contact hours are currently down compared to this time last year. We do anticipate an increase in full-time enrollments as we get closer to the start of the semester, which will lead to an increase in contact hours. We've talked about this numerous times, that the more students we have taking dual-credit courses, typically they're taking one, maybe two courses, the fewer contact hours we're going to have because that's less full-time students we have taking five courses. So I think that's a trend that we're going to continue to see throughout the next few years. Employee notice: DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have either resigned or retired: Zora Mansour, Sonography Clinical Coordinator; Brandy Bach, Sonography Instructor; Charles Tucker, Nursing Instructor. Policy BBD Legal requires that the minutes of the last regular meeting held by the College District Board during a calendar year must reflect whether each member of the board has completed any training required to be completed by the member as of the meeting date. That's Education Code 61.084-F. In accordance to Policy BBD Legal, I would like to report that all elected board members were up to date on all required training at the beginning of the current calendar year and that none of the elected board members were required to take additional training during the current calendar year. However, Judy McEnally was appointed to the board on February 11th of this year and completed her Public Funds Investment Act, her Open Meetings Act, and her Public Information Act earlier in the year. Therefore, all of the board members are currently up with all of the requirements for board training. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Eaton? Okay, item number four is the Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. Would like the board to take a look at that and determine if you have any questions, any comments. If there are none, then when you're ready, I would entertain a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda and Financial Reports.
I'll move.
You have a second?
Yeah, a motion and a second. Maybe more discussion. And I would ask that all those in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda and Financial Reports signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have there any opposed? There are none, the Consent Agenda is complete and approved. Item number five is consideration of possible action on the 2015-16 financial audit. Kathy Williams, Snow Garrett and Williams?
Yes.
Or was it Williams, Snow and Garrett? I heard that the other day.
Yeah, that makes me laugh every time, but it's still Snow Garrett Williams. That's just mine.
That was a good joke to repeat.
Yes, yes. Good afternoon, I am Kathy Williams. I'm a partner with Snow Garrett Williams. I'm going to take you through just a few items in your bound audit reports that I put in front of each of you, and I'll be glad to try and answer any questions that you may have. I will start out by saying it was a very good audit. The business office and everyone that we have to deal with on campus is so helpful and very good to work with. It actually, it's one of our favorite audits, if not our favorite audit, because they just have, do such a good job and have answers to questions and understand what's going on, and it's just really refreshing to have that level of staff in your business office working for you. We'll start out on page three in your bound reports. You'll see here that we have on page three the Independent Auditor's Report. The report has several bold captions. It starts out with the report on the financial statements. This is the, we have audited the financial statements of Weatherford College as of August 31st, 2016, and 2015, and the financial statements for the year then ended. And then it tells a little bit about your management's responsibility and then the auditor's responsibility. And over on the top of the next page, on page four, you'll see there it states our opinion. And that is a clean, or what's called an unmodified opinion, and it says that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects as of August 31st, 2016 and '15, and for the years then ended, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's that clean opinion that you as a board want to see. If you'll turn now over to page 12, we'll look at a few of the financial statements. We'll start on page 12 with the statements of net position. So these are like the balance, this is like the balance sheet of the college. This first page shows your asset, the college's assets as of August 31st. You'll see there total current assets is that first section. Total current assets increased just over $3.9 million from $26,785,000 at the end of August of '15 to just over $30.7 million at the end of August of 2016. Most of that increase is in your unrestricted cash, that very first line item. There were also, so your total, that was most of your increase, as I said, in your total current assets. In your non-current assets, you'll see there that total non-current assets actually decreased from $58.3 million to $57.2 million, and most of that's related to your depreciation on your capital assets because that is a net number. You'll see there that your total capital assets decreased from $44.3 million to $42.7 million at the end of August of 2016. Also, just want to point out your investments in real estate, that second to the last line item under non-current assets. There's an increase there from $8,165,000 to $8,754,480. That's related to an increase in appraised values on some property that the college owns, and it's the Carter property, and that property was appraised, so you had an increase in value there of over $588,000. So your total assets for the year increased from $85.1 million to $87.9 million. That's an increase of over $2.8 million, or about 3.3%, so a very good, healthy asset side of your balance sheet. If you'll turn now to the next page, on page 13, the second page of your statement of net position, you'll see here the college's liabilities. Total current liabilities increased about $1 million from 2015 to 2016. Total current liabilities were at $11,759,697. Most of that increase is related to what's called a line item that says unearned revenues, and that has to do with revenue that's collected for the next fiscal year. It's just collected before August 31st. So that's where most of your increase is there. It also includes a new liability for this year, that overpayment of state appropriations, which was included in our audit this year. It's got a current and a long-term portion, and it is being paid back to the state over about a two-to-three-year period. Non-current liabilities actually decrease, or increased just slightly from $21,560,000 to $21,130,648. And again, you're, as you see there, you've got the increase for the overpayment, and then you have decreases in notes payable and bonds payable just because of making your normal regularly scheduled payments on those liabilities. You also refunded or refinanced your 2007 bonds to take advantage of a lower interest rate. And then the bottom part of this page, so your total liabilities increased from $31.8 million to just over $32.8 million, so like I said, about a million-dollar increase in total liabilities. The bottom part of this statement, your net position or the equity of the college, includes your net investment in capital assets of $26.5 million. You have restricted equity, which is expendable for all of those items listed, of about $4.6 million, and then unrestricted net position of $24,3,690. When you put all of that together, your net position or equity of the college was at $55,203,702 at the end of August of 2016, and that was an increase of over $2.5 million from the previous year. If you'll turn now to page 15. On page 15, you'll find your statements of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. So this is like an income statement, a statement of revenue and expenses. It starts with your operating revenues for the college. You'll see there that tuition and fees increased from $7,736,000 for the last fiscal year to over $8.1 million for the 2016 fiscal year, an increase of about $364,000, and it's primarily related to continuing education and increase in that area, and then also a decrease in discounts and allowances. That's kind of what made up that increase. You might notice that federal grants and contracts, that next line item under operating revenues, decreased from $1.4 million to $953,539, and that's primarily because you had Title III funding that was only, it was only went through like the first month or two of fiscal year 2016. So you didn't have a full year of that grant activity. That grant expired, for lack of a better word, that term ended, that grant term. Auxiliary enterprises towards the bottom of that section increased from $1,836,000 to over $2.3 million, and that's where that increase in that appraised value shows up in that line item because it's related to that area. So your total operating revenues increased $210,644 from $15.9 million for fiscal year '15 to over $16.1 million for fiscal year '16. Your operating expenses increased slightly from the prior year. They increased from $42,45,000 to $42,256,000. Your largest areas, as you would expect, include instruction, institutional support, and then your operation and maintenance of plant. Your operating loss, this was an amazing thing to me. The operating loss for the college was almost exactly the same as the prior year. It was $26,131,544, and it was only $450 difference from that the previous year. And then you take into account your non-operating revenues and expenses, which includes your state appropriations, your property taxes, your non-operating grant revenue and those types of items, and all of those things put together were an increase or a net non-operating revenue amount of $28,688,761. And when you put that with the operating loss, you have an increase in net position for the year of $2,557,217 compared to that $2,149,000 the year before. If you'll turn now all the way back to page 64. As I pointed out to you before, on page 64, we have the college's schedule of findings and question cost. And I'd just like to point this page out because it's a good summary, and it shows you there that this audit includes several different reports. The auditor's report on the financial statements. We have a report over internal control and financial reporting. The federal and state awards, we have our report on compliance for major programs. And all of those were unmodified reports. And where it has checked no or none reported on the right-hand side of that page, that's what you want to see. What that's telling you is that in all of our testing, both on the financial statements and the federal and state awards that the college received, that we had clean opinions or unmodified opinions and that we had no findings or question cost. So that's, again, that's one of those things you want to see. I had someone ask me one time, "Is that the report card?" And it is kind of like a report card because it just kind of puts it all right there together and summarizes a lot of the work that we do and lets you know that we did not have any findings in the audit. You have a few loose letters in the back of your audit report. One of those is the management letter. And we'd just like to point out, we've had this comment in here for several years on page two of the management letter, just that the college has really good internal controls in place. So we're just recommending there that it's a vital oversight function, that assists in maintaining a strong and effective internal control environment, just to follow those controls, and if they need to be tweaked a little bit, you know, as circumstances change, that's fine, but just, you know, go by those controls, and they apply to everyone, and not everybody likes to follow rules, but that's just part of what we do. So it's just paying attention to those controls and monitoring them and keeping those good systems in place. And then the last item there, Other Matters, the good old governmental accounting standards board, GASB, like to keep us on our toes, and they added the pension standard a few years ago, and this newest one is going to go into effect not until fiscal year 2018, but it has to do with accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. And so we're just recommending there, the last paragraph, that as you have to implement these changes over the next few years, we're recommending that the college work with the employee retirement system, which is the ERS, to determine the calculation of what this OPEV liability is going to be. And it's similar to the pension standards, it's just a different, they're just adding another piece to that. It's an accounting calculation, it's just something that you have to do, and it's just going to be a little bit more work for everyone. That's what happened with the pension standard. So it'll be more footnotes, it'll be more reporting, but it's just for a different piece of that, and it's those post-employment benefits other than pensions. That's all that I have. As I, like I said when I started, it really was a very good audit. There wasn't, there aren't a whole lot of differences when you look at these two years, looking at fiscal year '15 compared to fiscal year '16. There were a few minor changes, but for the most part, there was, there was not a whole lot of difference or nothing really unusual that occurred from year to year. Any questions?
On the 2015 audit, were there, and that's a long time ago, were there, were there any recommendations to operations, to things that you would have followed up for this audit?
Right. No, there really weren't. We have done some additional procedures over the last few years related to inventory. That was an item that had come up several years ago, and so with the assistance of Dr. Cantrell, we, with her assistance, we look at a few different areas. Sometimes we may come up with something different to look out for inventory. Sometimes she has a suggestion. It includes both here and the Wise County campus, and we have not found any issues. In fact, they, they found it really interesting. One of the areas we looked at this year was the gym. And Dr. Eaton said, "And you didn't have any problems?"
No warning.
And the items we looked for and asked to see, they, we saw every one of them. So, so no, we did not have any follow-up items from the previous year.
Any other questions? Okay, then I would entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve 2015-16 financial audit.
That's still moved.
You have a second?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none? Thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Thank you for your business. We appreciate it. Thanks for having this meeting today. It's important to get this submitted to the state and meet their requirements, so thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martin, I would like to thank Snow Garrett and Williams. They're very good to work with, and we've had a very good relationship over the last few years. But I'd also like to recognize Rebecca Dupuis. She is the controller of the college, and she does a great job. She's been with us a couple of years now, and she works with the auditors in preparing work papers, and so I'd like to recognize her also.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
She does a fantastic job. Yeah, and like I said, the whole office makes it, they really do help us get the information that we need to be able to do the audit and get it done and completed and to you by this meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I've seen a smile in the auditor before.
Item number six is consideration of possible action, the ordering of the regular election. The Board of Trustees place two, place six, and place seven. Brent?
Yes, sir. As you know, our, our next board election is May the 6th of 2017, and so as Mr. Martin alluded to, place two, place six, and place seven are up. That's Mr. Martin, Dr. Haynes, and Mrs. McEnally. And so we are asking you to formally call the election, and the actual order of election is on the next page in your forward packet. That also includes the dates of early voting and the locations of early voting. By the way, the first day to file for the election is January the 18th, and the deadline to file is February 17th, and you file with Teresa in the president's office.
Okay, and I actually think that item was sent out. Wasn't it Teresa the?
This morning.
This morning or yesterday evening?
Yesterday. Yesterday.
And that is the, the order itself, which shows when the early voting will be, when the application shows all the information, shows where all the election spots are going to be. So if there are any questions or comments on that particular one? If not, could entertain a motion that the board approve that order?
I'd like that motion. Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, so ordered. Thank you. The next item is to discuss, discuss the possibility of rescheduling the June board meeting date.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, we had some scheduling conflicts with the original June 8th board meeting, and we were hoping the board could consider a June 1st board meeting or a June 15th board meeting. We would prefer June 1st, if you were okay with that date, but June 15th would be fine as well.
Do you need a motion on that?
I'm sorry?
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion for June 1st?
You have a second?
Okay. Any other discussion? I think it's sufficient ahead of time. Appreciate it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item number eight, A, Equities and Athletics Report. And Dean Finlay.
The Equities and Athletics Report is required for all institutions of higher education that participate in federal student aid programs and has an intercollegiate athletic program. This report is required to be published each October and contains participation rates, financial support, and other information on men's and women's intercollegiate athletic programs. The purpose of this report is intended to make prospective students aware of a school's commitment to providing equitable athletic opportunities. The last page of the report provides a summary of this year's report to show an increase of male participation in athletics. However, W C strives to provide equitable access and opportunities for both male and female students. We have to address any questions.
The way I look at this, we have, it shows the percentage of full-time males at 42%, females at 58%.
Yes, sir.
And then when I look at participation, it's like 75 men, 45 women, and I understand that is some, like in baseball, they give a lot of partial scholarships and stuff, I think.
That is correct.
Is that what contributes to that difference?
It is. We also saw a decrease in our, our female rodeo athletes in our co-ed, so that kind of skewed the numbers a little bit this year, so.
Any questions or comments? I think that is no requirement on our part, just presentation of a report. And you send this into?
The Department of Exteriors.
Okay, very good. Next item is item number nine, the Future Agenda Items or Meetings.
We will be adopting the 17-18 tuition and fees, and we will also be asking for approval for the 17-18 academic calendar for future meetings.
Okay. Any comments or questions about the Future Agenda Items? Next item is announcements. Brent?
Yes, sir. Several things happening before our, our next board meeting, several basketball games. We're getting into conference play when we come back from Christmas break. We have a student voice recital that is on the 11th of next week. We have our, Thursday night, we have our employee awards dinner, our Christmas dinner, and that's and that's going to be at the Springs, south of town. We'd love for you all to come if you'd like to. Teresa can take care of getting tickets for you. It's always a fun event. We'll be giving our Staff Member of the Year award that night and awarding our anniversary years, five, 10, 15-year employees that night. The college will be closed for the holidays, beginning December the 19th, and then reopening on January the 2nd, and then spring semester begins on January the 17th.
Any questions or comments on announcements? Then it is, it's not working, so. It's 2:33, I'd like to call a short recess, and then we'll reopen in a closed session with board members on. Okay, it is, somebody put a battery in that car and kept the clock.
We just recently. We are making such a good progress.
It is 3:53 right now, appreciate your patience. We'll go back into open session. At this time, we have agenda number 12, agenda item number 12, I would entertain a motion to extend Dr. Eaton's contract through calendar year 2019 at his present rate of salary.
Can I make that motion?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. And then I would like to hear a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
You have a second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Who seconded the motion from Sally?